Okay, we'll go ahead and call to order the special meeting of the committee to hold for Monday, October nineteenth, twenty twenty. Um, I believe Chief is gonna lead it, lead us in a brief prayer.
Bow your heads if you feel inclined to do so. Dear Lord, our Father, we thank you for all the blessings you've given us and continued blessings we'll look forward to. Times have been rough here and we're getting through it together. Appreciate everything you do for us and for this community. Just guide our hearts tonight in the, in the best interest of this community and let everybody do the absolute best they can for everyone that lives here. Thank you, amen.
Okay, if we can stand up and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brandon, if you can take a roll.
Rothschild, Kennett?
Here.
Crowe?
Here.
Barnhart?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
James? Samowski?
Here.
Arnold?
Okay, we do have a quorum. Uh, public comments, city ordinance allows members of the public to speak and give an input for three minutes during public comments. There can be no debate or action by the council at this time. Are there any members of the public? Chief? Nope. Uh, moving on, mayor's comments, just briefly, I'd like to thank everybody that could attend tonight for doing so on such short notice. It was obvious as we talked about budget issues with, uh, the staff, it was important to have a meeting sooner than later to give them the proper direction, so they were efficient in their time that they spent. Versus putting a lot of work into something and then it's coming back with something different. So, again, I appreciate everybody coming in at such short notice. Uh, any city council comments? Joe, city administrators? Okay, we'll move right on to administration, item nine point one, discussion of the fiscal year twenty one budget.
So, we have attached two budgets. Um, the first one was the one that was sent out on Friday with a fifteen percent reduction in sales tax. We did a second draft today with just a ten percent reduction in sales tax, so, um, I'm sorry. If you printed it today, if you print it before two o'clock, it's a fifteen percent reduction. And we, we just wanna put these both up there so that, um, you can kind of give us a direction of what to go with with the reductions. The difference, um, Jamie, between, the, the big difference is general fund, obviously. And the difference between a fifteen percent reduction and a ten percent reduction is?
A hundred thousand, one hundred and forty seven dollars and eighty eight cents.
So, I, I think we'll pull up the ten percent reduction in sales tax and go through it. And if you all decide that you want to do the fifteen percent, that, that's real simple too. Because all the numbers stay the same as far as budgeted items, it's revenue that changes.
Do we have a feel, I mean, I know it's hard to, hard to guesstimate, but do we have a feel on where we might be?
We do. Um, so we've been comparing to the five-year average. And in hindsight, I think that's probably not the best metric because in the last five years, we lost a car dealership, but we've had other businesses come in. So, I looked at just comparing to last year. Um, sales tax is down by two percent. So, you know, we estimated up to forty percent, which was extremely conservative. Um, I still don't think that was a mistake because it served us really well. Our bond rating stayed the same. We were one of the few cities that maintained their bond rating. And it was because we were so conservative that then we still balanced our budget.
And we're in such short window of time, just a six-month window too, I mean.
Right, right. And, you know, doing like the ten percent, fifteen percent, you know, you can say who's got the better crystal ball, 'cause none of us know.
Yeah, and those are equivalent, those are probably equivalent of each other truthfully. I mean, compared to ten to forty, ten to fifteen is, I mean, it's almost, they're almost apples and oranges.
They're much closer, much closer.
Yeah.
Um, but we did, as everybody knows, we took steps to reduce our budget, um, with the early retirement. We stopped a lot of capital projects. So, the general fund is sitting pretty healthy right now, but had we continued on the path we were on, it was not going to be good.
And selling industrial park helps.
Well, not yet, 'cause they haven't closed.
Oh, we haven't yet?
No, they were supposed to close October, the last working day in October.
Awesome, thank you.
So, I guess let's, can you click on the first, uh, it's second draft, yeah?
And just in case somebody that has the first draft, there are a couple other items in there that changed. Um, so, the bond payment being one of them. I saved in this budget year for half the bond payment, and in the next budget year, I changed it to the other half. But originally, I had the entire bond payment in there. So, that was reduced. Um, and then there were two line items in police that were changed, um, I know with the salary area. Otherwise, I think everything else remained the same, but if you do see some discrepancies there, those are those.
So, starting with the general fund, it's projected to open at two million, three hundred fifty-five dollars. And we'll go ahead and run down real quick. I'll give you opening and closing, and then we can go through any individual line items. But it's projected to close with the two percent at almost what it opened. So, revenue over expenses were to the positive eleven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars. And we would close with two million and twelve thousand. But you need to keep in mind that it wouldn't have opened this high had we not paid health insurance out of Fund Seventy, those three health insurance payments. So, that made a difference, and obviously salaries went down. So, if we scroll back up to the top to expenses, our salaries are down. Actually, our expenses are down almost three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars over two thousand and twenty's expenses. So, we've, we've done quite a bit to reduce. So, looking at, um, our taxes, those are all relatively the same except sales tax. You'll see is down, and that's reflecting the ten percent decrease in sales tax. And I'll let Jamie drop that in from here.
Okay, so, on the P P R T, um, it is expected to go down this year. And we get in significantly more than this, but the majority of it does go to cover the offset of the police pension. So, this year, in the admin side, you're only, um, the administration for the admin side, you're only gonna see a seventeen hundred dollar refund. For state income tax, again, um, that's a projection of ten percent decrease at five hundred and fifty-two thousand. Local use being a hundred and sixty thousand. The telecommunications tax remain the same. And then we go into the lots for the cemetery. Those, um, pretty, you know, I went back a few years to average them out and looked at the trend. Um, they can kind of go up and down depending on where people want their, to purchase their lots at. Then grave openings, we, um, are pretty steady with budget being around fifty-five thousand. Typically, they go up coming maybe a smidge higher, but not too much higher.
Jamie? I could. When you did the ten percent reduction though, that was based on the five-year average.
Correct.
So, so if you're looking at last year's numbers and you're going, well, ten percent less than one point four million would be a hundred and forty thousand. That's why those numbers don't work, because we did ten percent less the five-year average. Okay, does that make sense?
But you're saying that, you're saying that in hindsight, we should just simply take ten percent off of last year?
In hindsight, when we're looking at how much sales tax has fallen, and you asked me that question, I think we should look at last year, but projecting how much we might bring in, I think we should look at the five-year average.
Even though we've lost a lumber store and a car dealership, have we really made up that much business to say that that's applicable?
Yeah.
Okay.
You can see, and it, it trends out, you know, like, five years ago, we were a little bit lower. The next year, we're fifteen thousand higher, the next year, we're a little lower. So, it is up and down, it's not a steady incline or decline.
But, but if you just take out sales tax, not, not excise tax, not some of the other personal property tax, just sales tax, looking at last year's sales taxes, are accurate.
Joe, would you remind me what, uh, telecommunications taxes?
Well, that's what, oh, we get from the phone companies like Verizon.
Yeah, it's like your, it has a bunch of things in it, your excise, your NICOR taxes, your, um, tele, the telephone company taxes. So, there's a lot. Initially, it goes into capital, but two hundred thousand is dedicated to a general fund, and so that being the area transfer the two hundred. And that was not projected up, we shouldn't see a decrease in that at all because it's not affected by, by anything from COVID.
Right, those were contracts that we have.
Um, let's see, I was at fees. Um, again, the park fees, circuit clerk fee, clerk fees, parking fees, any kind of fee with that. I just trended out and stayed with the, the average of those fees. Um, you'll notice that miscellaneous admin, um, it is at eight thousand, even though we brought in twenty-three thousand last year. A lot of that is from bear development. Um, they gave us the ten thousand dollars. So, typically, on average, we bring in around eight thousand dollars, just in case you were wondering for that.
So, that pass-through agreement with bear, it was, the contract stated one seventy, but they gave us a check for one eighty. And they, I said, hey, this is, these two conflict, and they said, well, there might be miscellaneous stuff. Okay, we'll keep it.
Let me go into the licenses. Again, I kept those pretty much the same as what they were, or pretty close to what those were. Didn't really increase them a lot. Um, I increased the liquor license just a, a little bit, um, with a couple of the businesses that are gonna get liquor licenses coming up. Uh, then the permits, um, we did increase those slightly for building permits, um, because we did raise our fees starting January. So, those did raise a little bit.
Why do you think we're gonna have fireworks permits next year?
We passed the ordinance that they could come in and get fireworks.
Oh, that's right, okay.
So, we just threw in a small number there. I have no idea how many people will get them though.
It won't be a lot.
No, no, it's a great answer, thank you. I forgot about that, to be honest.
The same with golf cart permits, it was a complete guess on our part. Um, it could be more and it could be less. Then we kind of jumped down to, a lot of those are pretty, pretty much the same, like your full easement, came in and lowered taxes. Those are, we already know those are gonna stay the same. Um, I, it decreased for any kind of interest account because interest rates are pretty low right now, and I don't see them increasing anytime within the next year. So, you'll, you'll see in every fund that has interest for, uh, throwing in there that they are on a decline. And rent income, again, that's a stagnant number that we always put in there. Question about any of those line items?
Anything I have a question about is on the, uh, building permits. What, at sixty-eight thousand, what do you, I know part of Rick's salary is out of that, but what else is, can we use that money for as a pro, engineering or?
It's just a revenue, so when people come in and get per, they come in and get an actual building permit, that's our revenue that we put in there.
So, it goes into the general fund?
Yeah.
And then sitting under the general fund is the building inspector?
Yeah.
So, it just kind of goes in the pot?
Okay, yeah.
It's not dedicated?
No. We'd have to have a separate kind of line item for that.
Then the, uh, administration expenses, um, so salary, and I'd let Joe.
Yeah, so salaries are down by about fifty thousand, and that's due to the, the positions being eliminated. Uh, health insurance is relatively the same. Uniforms are, uh, the same. We go down to, you know, the rest of the, the salaries were, that increased. Oh, okay. So, um, on salaries, we have been talking, we talked last, uh, Tuesday in executive session about what we hope to achieve at the next July. Uh, we've already negotiated those contracts, but what we're hoping to do. And, uh, the two or three people that are also impacted, that we felt were extraordinarily low. And without getting into specifics, the salaries reflect what we talked about last week in executive session. So, the percentage of increase is reflected there, and the three salaries are reflected there. And if anybody wants to know specifics on that, I can add executive session to the next week.
I was, I was thinking, we weren't thinking those are gonna take effect until twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two?
Anyway, we don't wanna talk about that here, that's fine, but.
Um, Sean?
Oh, okay.
Okay. So, obviously, you know that we want to look in March after the Christmas season and see if we can do more than what we negotiated with the unions. If we can do more, and only if we can do more, those three would take effect, the, just three people, not the whole.
Not the other thing, okay, okay, that's what I'll talk about, thank you.
But if we can't do more, then those three would not take effect until July of twenty-two. Does that make sense?
So, you're gonna hold.
I gotta ask this people question. So, this is for twenty twenty-one, and this is the very first time that we're able to run this calendar year to calendar year. Correct?
Yep.
And so, was that easier to judge the revenues because they're coming in?
Well, I know the revenues from the tax levy. I know the actual true revenues because we got to do our tax levy. And now, we're gonna get a full year, we're in June when I was doing the budget. I had no idea what I was gonna levy for in that number. So, yes, that absolutely did help.
And then the next time we negotiate union contracts, we'll negotiate for an eighteen-month contract. So, the union contracts coincide with our calendar year. And we're also, uh, our health insurance, we're, correct me if I'm wrong, Brandon, but aren't we, we're trying to get our health insurance to coincide at some point with our calendar year, so we know what our renewals are.
It's hard.
Real quick regarding the, um, so, if we were in a position to be able to, um, I guess compensate the union positions at a different rate, obviously, that's out of responsibility, uh, cooperation of them working with us and, and partnering with us to try to head off a problem. I thought it was important that we take a look at perhaps people that might not be union also. And, uh, 'cause they exercise the same amount of, uh, grace and dignity of their job and make a sacrifice along the way too. So, this is obviously, like I said, just a starting point. If the council or any members feel strong, this, the point of this meeting was to give the staff direction, we can definitely go back and review those things.
I'm good with it. Thank you, Sean.
Yep.
Um, so administrative expenses, I, I don't know that there's a whole lot more there to talk about except we are seeing the advantage in professional services. If you see last year, um, we budgeted, or is the blue actual, Jamie, or budget, to left, our left?
The green is actual, and the blue is budgeted for the six months.
For the six month, so.
Purple is the twenty twenty, right?
Right, and so we're just budgeting thirty for admin, for legal. Other things that could be professional would be, you know, uh, like when we had Donna from Lee County, that treasurer, give us a third opinion on information, outside opinion, so.
And with professional services, we'll know more, have a better understanding next year, and we'll have a full year where the number thirty just was decreased from when we didn't have a cap. So, we should have a more accurate number next year too.
Right. I think it was well done. Uh, travel and training, we did budget for that again, we had budgeted last year, um.
I don't think you have attached the right one, 'cause I heard this number changed to one and seven.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, sure.
Mm-hmm. 'Cause it's half the bond payment, and that was the one thing I changed.
Okay, so, we might have an error here.
So, it's like one eighty-five?
Yeah, it's like one thirty-seven, one thirty.
Instead of the two sixty-nine.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah, I guess you're right, I'm sorry.
I wish I changed that number.
So, what do you think?
One thirty. Just gonna scroll down and see if, make sure we've got the right.
Okay, one thirty-eight. We just had the branch one open. Okay, so it's one thirty-eight.
Hey, why is it half?
So, the six-month month budget, I budgeted for half.
Oh, okay, 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 yep, yep.
And so, I originally had two sixty-nine, and then after looking at it in more depth, I realized that I would be budgeting then for one and a half payments.
So, after this next year, it'll go back to the full?
Correct.
So, it's like a one-year, one-year half savings kind of?
Yeah, that's correct. I think the only thing to keep in mind with bond payments is every year, they have to be paid in February. So, for instance, the electric funds, even if they close with like a million dollars, to keep in mind that, you know, four hundred has to go away right away for their bond payment.
If it's due in February, why isn't it all in next year's budget and not in the six months?
I think that I originally was gonna budget for half and half.
Okay.
And then I did the same with all the other bonds.
Okay.
But next year will be full bonds. For fireworks, again, I kept that on twenty-five thousand dollars as donations coming in and twenty-five thousand dollars to be spent. And then we come down to inspections.
So, on inspections, um, keep in mind that there's additional revenue that's, that into the general fund. So, it's, it's not shown here. And then, but the salaries are taken from here. And the cost, training, advertising, equipment, all of that comes out of here.
Not that it really matters, but since we have an inspector's revenue, why isn't the building permit and all that part of this revenue stream?
It, when it was created, all the revenues came into the administration.
Okay.
We've, we've talked about it.
Yes.
We are going to try and do something next, next fiscal year twenty-two with the cemetery specifically, so that the lot sales and the grave openings is reflected in the cemetery fund, so that it's easier to quantify, how much does a cemetery cost? Because, um, Craig asked me to give a report at the next meeting. And without going through every single invoice, it's virtually impossible for me to quantify how much the cemetery costs. And especially this year, we had street people working at the cemetery. So, it's, it's tough.
And it's not just an easy cut and paste because you have to take into consideration salaries need to be allocated now, all of those different areas.
So, if you scroll down on this one, um, obviously, it's, it's always in the hole because the revenue's not reflected here. But then, we'll get to the bottom, and we'll have our tool. So, then we've got public works revenues, so that's straight nally. So, we've got our taxes there, which are down a little bit. Can you take that?
Mm-hmm. Um, so the straight and bridge property tax, I only put in what's on the levy because that's only what we're guaranteed. Um, but we do get more from the townships, um, so we should see it coming a little bit higher. But I don't even ever know what to predict. It really just depends on what access they, um, do their levy for, and so if they decrease, then we can see a decrease in it. You'll notice the salaries are down, public works, from five eleven to four ten. And that's a reflection of Brian, um, so we replaced Brian's position with a lower salary position, and we did not replace the lower salary Ken.
Is that gonna bite us, given the fact that this summer, we couldn't hire all the park, I mean, maybe it's good that we can fluctuate with part-time?
No, it's, it's, it's a challenge, like you can't believe.
Right, I'm, so I wonder if that's gonna bite us long-term that we say we're gonna get up to part people?
If the department is short, it, besides the challenges, obviously, the chief is working through right now with manpower is, would be public works. Uh, especially with the amount of work they have to do with the cemetery and everything else, it's, it's, uh, it's a problem.
I mean, I guess, like, again, I can see this offset is, oh, we're having a tough year, so we're just not gonna hire as much summer help. But then, you can only do that for so long.
Exactly, and I guess.
It's kind of a flexibility issue too, but.
Like I said, in the, the last meeting, it gets so cyclical and the things that affects, you're not fixing sidewalks, you're not, you know, you're not maintaining properties, you're, and, and just, then those problems become financial problems of their own right down the road, and it's, it's a vicious cycle.
So, kind of just scrolling down then through public works, um, if we get to the bottom, you'll see that the expenses are nine oh seven. Last year was nine ten, so it's roughly the same. Revenue over expenses, that number really doesn't matter because the revenues are going into the general fund, and public works is supported by the general fund. Okay, then public saving.
So, even though we're down a hundred thousand, where, where do we pick up then if we're down a hundred thousand, but its overall expenses are about the same? So, we must, we must've increased a hundred thousand someplace?
We, so we increased on part-time.
Makes sense.
So, that is up about forty thousand from that year. And then, I wanna say sidewalks?
Yeah, there was.
Again, that makes sense.
There's no, but, um.
And retired health insurance.
The retired health insurance, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And uniforms. And, and keep in mind, uniforms, sorry.
You're right.
You're, we're gonna say the same thing, uniforms, we, we have to budget as if they bought uniforms twice because the human cycle is still July to June. So, in theory, they could buy, spend their whatever, fifteen hundred in August, and they could spend it again in April.
All within the same budget?
Or April and August, which is gonna be in one fiscal year for us, but two union years for this.
One union year. Well. Well, two years of the, yeah.
So it's two thousand, two of the expenses.
Four thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Out of this one, it's a thousand, yeah, she was referencing that.
Yeah.
So for public works, it's not just one line item for revenues, it must be a percentage of the different revenues get allocated over to public works?
The revenues that come in from public works are your tax allocations.
Off of the tax.
Yeah, I mean, the only other additional ones would be the cemetery and then the parks.
So they get a percentage off the property taxes?
They get all of the property taxes that apply to them and the revenues. Not a percentage, it's whatever we levy, so if we levy for like the public comfort or streets, that all goes into public works.
Are the tax levies, there's a specific line that says street and bridge, there's a line that says comfort, which is actually meant for like the sitting bathroom, comfort station, I think that's what it's actually called.
So all of these up here, Paula, um, for public works revenue, they actually go into public works.
And then the difference is just made up with the general fund?
Correct, right.
But even with those hands, we're this far, we, remember.
Yeah, I mean, the hard thing with, with our tax levy is, I mean, you have to remember, we're funding most of the police pension with it, so we can't increase these line items unless we get a revenue source for police.
Or a revenue source for these.
So correct.
So that's what I'm saying, these revenues here that are directly for public works, don't want you to say it's down, but street bridges or whatever, but they must get something out of this general fund too.
Whatever they're short, that comes out of the general fund.
It may be kind of a crazy idea, so just tell me if it's crazy, but you know, we have the softball fields, who it's a private entity that make money off of tournaments and all that. Have we, have we ever discussed, we have Richmond Hill's fantastic golf, uh, Frisbee Golf Course, and now T-ball, of us actually having someone who coordinates and actually make money by renting out those facilities and hosting tournaments and actually making, turning that into more of a revenue center? Is that something that we've ever talked about?
That's inside of the council.
Even like, you know, I know the softball fields are rented out to the churches or, but we have that agreement, but I just kind of wonder, since obviously there's a commercial entity in town that's actually making money off of softball, maybe it's something to think about on, you know, obviously that requires personnel though. Anyway, just a thought.
Got it. Think about discussing.
Yeah, I mean, assuming you can deal with what you put into the position.
Yeah, then maybe.
At, at the very least, you're marketing your community and your, you know, the trickle-down effect of, of something that, and it might not necessarily have to be a holding position either.
Right.
So.
So then moving on to public safety, unless, Paula, did you have another question?
No, that's okay.
Okay, so public safety, that's police, and so you'll see that they're funded through taxes. I am going to suggest that, uh, we raise our tax levy for police protection. Uh, it can be up to point one five, it's currently point zero one three five. But in order to do that, because we always raise the four point nine 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 percent into police pension, we would have to do a truth and taxation hearing. Um, so we'd have to have a public hearing. It doesn't have to go on a referendum, but we do have to do a hearing. But we've, we've got to figure out ways to support police, and everybody keeps asking, how can we support them? And of course, it's wonderful to tell them that they're doing a good job and the cookies and all that kind of stuff, but we need to financially support the police. And the police budget is about one point six million, but we're not bringing in anywhere near that in taxes to support it. Um, or services or fees and fines, we're not. And I, I don't wanna diminish the police role, but it is somewhat like a swimming pool. If a city owns a swimming pool, you're providing this service and you'll always lose money on a city-owned swimming pool loan. We have to provide police service. But it's reached the point, because of the police pension, that everything else is suffering because the taxes are going more and more to the pension. And within just a few years, all of our taxes will be going to the police pension.
That was an alarm Jamie sounded, I believe, a year or two ago.
She did.
So, I mean, to echo what Joe's statements, as much as we talk about this, it's, and as painful as any type of, type of tax increases, I get it. We have to figure out some sort of revenue stream. And, and I know there's a huge distaste by a lot of members of this community for some other revenue streams that are available. And the short of working towards, which there is economic development going on, um, but we have to do something, or we have to look at restructuring our police department in this cycle, and we want public safety to look like in this town, is that something? Because it just cannot continue to consume so much of the general fund. And even if we were to continue to look along doing that, the door is closing rapidly on even that being a viable means for us to do something, so. That's why we went this route.
Right. And general fund's gonna look pretty good here, but don't, don't be complacent, because, um, it took a lot to do that, and it's got a lot of mandates. Just moving a little bit further, so, uh.
Yeah, and, and I don't think we need to be afraid of having a, a public hearing, a taxation hearing and what have you. I know historically, it's the four nine nine, oh, we don't wanna have a hearing and stuff, but, you know, I, I'm actually all for having a hearing, we just need to explain.
Yeah.
Why we're doing this, but, you know, the, uh, uh, the police department is, you know, and, and being a, a safe community and what have you, you know, you look at our vision statement and what have you, but, but that's kind of it, we lose that. Uh, you know, we lose it in our property values, you, I mean, you can make all sorts of arguments to why that's quite honestly just a smart investment. Uh, it, you know, for ourselves and the community, so I.
Yeah, we don't wanna get too heavy in examples and all, but I know Joe and Jamie did some generic calculations, I guess generic.
Sure.
lack a better word, but, I mean, and I understand that there's a lot of, a lot of senior citizens in this community where every dollar is of the utmost importance. But to me, when I heard the, uh, an example, I was like, that seemed like a no-brainer to me, to maintain what we have. Uh, for violent crime does not in our community, and we were reminded just a few weeks ago that it does not, and when that knock comes, we're darn lucky to have what we have as a community, so.
Agree.
Yeah, and I, I think.
You can defend something like this.
Yeah, and that, that's what I would ask, uh, you know, I know Bob, you, you're, you're on the public block, Keith, and all of us are in some capacity, and I think it's, that's the biggest thing that, that we could ask as administration from the council is, is just to, to echo the message and the facts, and make, you know, help the public understand what we're up against, and, and because so many times people hear tax increase and, and, you know, it's gonna be this gigantic number, and really, at the end of the day, that's a pretty small price to pay to make sure there's something there that answers that call when the call comes in.
I did a really, really rough calculation, I used my house, uh, estimated value of three hundred thousand, and it would be twenty-six dollars a year more. For the police protection to reach the most we can levy. So I, it's worth twenty-six dollars a week.
That's just a smart investment, yeah, obviously.
So moving down to public safety expenses, uh, we do have, just like the other departments, the salaries reflect the increases that we talked about. And, um, the one position that was extraordinarily low, one of the three, is reflected here. And, uh, uniforms for them, so they, they also, with their salaries, we have budgeted for three new officers, even though it may only end up being two this year or next year.
I would clarify, the word is not new, the word replacement officers.
Replace the officers.
Yeah, it is.
Yes.
All right, we're down three.
We're down three.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm sorry, Casey, you take this. You know all the year numbers.
So that, that's what the salaries are, it's the, the twelve, the twelve, uh, officers that, you know, we're, we're requesting to have full-time here. Um, three of them are gone, uh, March, August, and, uh, just recently here, about three weeks ago. Uh, dispatching is staying the same, the office is myself, Gene, and Jessica. Part-time has a little bit of Dennis in there, crossing guards. Um, uniforms, well, we can touch on that one again, because now that we're getting, uh, it'll be two lateral officers. And when I was putting this together, I really didn't know what the timeframe was, it could have been January first. So those new officers that we're gonna hire, I'm gonna have to find money to outfit them in this year, in this six-month budget that we're doing now, because they are gonna be hired before January first. So we, we'll worry about that. All that's, you, if you wanna go down?
I asked Casey about minor equipment, so I said, is that a new revenue stream, we're gonna start mining?
Police officers, uh, no. Uh, professional services, we've been saving a lot of money on that. Um, I'm taking, I'm putting, uh, we had, we had a, a sizable chunk that was more than what's in there now. And it just felt like the stuff that was coming out of there was not appropriately placed in the, in the line. So we had stuff like Arcade Dixon coming out of there, um, Twin States, a bunch of weird stuff. Where most, everybody else in the city is using, you know, professional services just a turnip piece. So that's been, that's been, uh, we, we've taken that money and upped it to operating, so when you see operating, that went from seven fifteen to ninety-five hundred. That's because that stuff, that doesn't make sense, that's been sitting in there for, you know, for as long as, it's been there for a while. So I'm putting that in a place that's more appropriate for it to come out of.
So Chief, are we gonna be at nine or ten?
So what we, what we, we're trying to do is get to twelve.
Yeah, twelve is twelve in normal.
Twelve's the number, yeah.
Yeah, twelve's the number with, with Gene.
We're at nine right now, yeah.
Yeah, we're nine.
It's a dangerous situation for the police department, to be honest, I mean, and that's something that might give.
Yeah, and things happen, like we just brought up three weeks ago, um, that was never more evident, why we have a dispatch center. That was a God, that was a God's blessing right there, that day, when all that stuff happened, that we had them at our disposal, it was, it was, it was very good. Uh, plus, you know, everybody here is, uh, more willing to jump in on stuff like that too.
Can you tell us what the plans are for hiring people or?
Um.
Next few months or something?
Yeah, well, no, no, I'm, we, we had, uh, lateral, uh, interviews last week. And, um, as long as, you know, pending they pass some certain things that we have to do in the law enforcement profession, I would like to give people, give them the opportunity to give your budget number eight, yeah.
Number eight?
Yeah.
Oh, one?
No, two.
Two?
Two, because we're down three.
These, these positions are already budgeted, so it was, it was a no-brainer to fill them immediately to stop the bleeding per se.
Correct.
So the number eight, we're gonna have two more.
Hopefully.
Hopefully, yeah.
Yes.
That's a, that's a lot better.
Yeah.
Correct, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. Um, you wanna scroll down?
These are both viable moves, so.
Yeah.
I guess we can surprise coming in both of these.
We do, yeah.
And tell them quickly about the new recruit list, because it seems promising with the amount of applicants.
Uh. Right. Yeah, we, well, we had, a, a lot, a lot of apps went out, um, we had the ones that did show up, they all passed. And from what we saw that day, they all looked very, very viable, viable options. Um, my goal down the road for our last one would be to hire somebody off that new hire list, get somebody who's, uh, uh, not, not been in the profession before.
Nice. Just, I mean, I was wondering about this, when you have a lateral move of experienced officer, what, what's their requirements, I mean, do they have to go to any kind of training necessarily, or what's the?
So. It, it kind of depends where the latter are from, so we have Illinois Law Enforcement Standards and Training Board. Um, if that person is already certified in Illinois, usually, um, and like, like I go back to Gene, Gene Carr's case. So he was out of police work, he was still in police work, but not being like a, uh, city officer somewhere. So he got a couple mandates from I-Let's Be.
Oh, you're getting the mic?
I got it.
To, uh, he had, he got a couple extra mandates to complete, and once he, once he completed those, he was, you know, that, he was good to go. So it kind of depends where they come from, I know the two that we have that we're gonna move forward and hiring, as long as they pass all the good stuff, they are already law enforcement officers right now in Illinois.
I think you have to turn.
Better? Maybe not, huh?
Maybe I'm wrong? Maybe you owe me glasses?
Yes. So the two, the two that we're moving forward and hiring are currently Illinois certified.
Okay, nice.
Uh, let's see here, so that, you know, the professional services and the, and the operating one, those are the two that are, are different, and I gave you the reasons for that. Anybody, anything else there you wanna explain, or do you feel like animal control, I noticed you went from three thousand or whatever down to one thousand, is that? It is enough.
Is that alignment with our new agreement or whatever our agreement is with them?
Correct, so I would have that funded in case the sadness in the rise is where we'd have to put something down. You know, hopefully that doesn't happen, that we would, um, we would have that money available.
Okay, is that, is this different than that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
What can you buy a police car, it's not any reason?
Just the.
No, capital.
Be a company or something?
That would be capital.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, be a count, it could be, if, uh, if those funds were available, or, you know, Article thirty-six seizures, DUI fines.
Okay.
Um, it takes a while to build all those up, so we're not to that point yet.
Do you feel, speaking of that, so I know that we've made some great, both money investments and personnel investments in, in cooperation with other people, have, has that paid off at all? Of seizures or?
Yeah, I mean, it's still a work in progress.
I mean, I know that's, that's a.
Yeah. No.
It's not overnight thing, I was just curious if that, if you feel like that's been doing.
No, it's, it's, uh, it's a work in progress, and yeah, they, they've done, uh, there's some really good things that have happened.
Awesome.
Um, you can't measure the, the potential for saving people's lives or getting certain things off the street, you just never know what's gonna happen, because we stopped it. So the work they're doing is, uh, is, is great, and hopefully, you know, down the road, you know, once people get more and more, uh, fine-tune, fine-tune those skills, that more stuff will happen too.
That's awesome.
You guys good for us to move on? Thanks. So we have council expenses, um, that doesn't really change, and there's no, obviously no revenue. And then that gets us to our total, we're at the end, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we finished just about where we started, two million dollars. So we're finishing with, with just using a ten percent reduction in sales tax, we finish to the good eleven thousand eight hundred and fifty-two. And with our carry forward, we finish at two million, twelve thousand. And we do have the numbers, I'll let JV give them to you, and we use different percentages.
If we came in with full revenue, we would be into the positive two hundred and fifty-five thousand. For five hu- percent revenue, it would be a hundred and thirty-six thousand. If we went to fifteen percent decrease, um, we would be in the hole a hundred thousand. And if we went to a twenty percent decrease, it would be two hundred and seventeen thousand in the hole.
And that's revenue over expenses.
Correct.
So we'd still have a positive ending number, but if you do that for too many years.
You're eating into savings?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You brought down the money. Are there any questions about the general fund? Okay?
All of them, we look right, no.
Okay, moving on.
So the, the A police, um, again, we just budget the same thing every year, we have no idea what we're gonna get in. Um, as far as C's funds, some years we get money in and some years we don't. And this, the same with, um, the B account, this is the B account. Um, again, we revenue or we, um, budget for approximately this exact same amount, because we, for the B account, you technically can't budget for a large item purchase. It's just off the cuff, as long as it falls in the criteria, you can purchase it. So those are gonna stay pretty close to the same. Then, um, the same with the D account. Then we get into, um, Wortman's Comp, and this is Wortman's Comp for. And this is workman's comp for the employees that work in the general fund. And this is off of our tax levy. Um, so we'll bring in what I levy, and we'll close out, um, in the whole thirteen thousand, we'll have to hit that checking balance. Um, this is one thing that I believe it was three years ago, we decided we could decrease because we had a significant balance in there. So next year, we'll want to increase this, because I feel like we are getting a little bit low in this area. We wanna at least finish even, um, so we would have had to have levied an additional thirteen thousand to be close even.
The math here kinda confuses me, because I, it looks like we're spending eight thousand less, but when I look at the numbers, everything in twenty twenty-one is more than twenty twenty. So I'm trying to figure out why it's less negative.
The property taxes are higher.
Yeah. Okay, so maybe that, maybe that's enough to offset, maybe I missed that one. Well, eight thousand and then interest is eight thousand less, so that off, those two offset each other. I was just curious, I'm, I maybe I'm missing it just by glancing it real quick. I just don't see, I don't see that we're, um, eight thousand less since expenses.
Eight thousand, I'm sorry, eight thousand less, where do you see?
The total's the bottom.
The expenses are fifty-two thousand six thirty-five with last year.
Oh, I'm looking at the next one, revenue over expenditures.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong, that's my fault. I'm looking at the wrong, I'm looking at the wrong row.
Okay.
Sorry.
It totally adds up to the same, which is what I was doing in my head, but, thank you.
Um, and then the next fund is a social security fund. Again, this is only social security that is paid for employees that are in the general fund. Um, this is one fund that if we don't have enough room, and the other portion of the tax levy, I would probably levy this a little bit less, since the balance is higher, either this one or the IMRF. Um, we can play with these, because we do have a little bit of a cushion in here. But we wanna keep in mind that, you know, if we have somebody retire from the general fund, and they have huge payouts, their, the social security in those areas could be increased. Um, the same with IMRF, that fund.
Wait, hold back that. Um, so one thing to keep in mind, even though we're healthy, we've got, we figure we'll finish at eighty-two thousand. We're still spending more than what we're levying in taxes.
The next fund is the IMRF fund. Again, this is IMRF for employees that are in the general fund. This fund is pretty healthy, um, but we do have accelerated payments that come in from when people retire. And we don't, you know, we don't know how much they are going to be. I know that we have a recent one that Brayden's going to try to dispute. Um, but if they don't, it's around twenty thousand dollars that we'll have to pay out of this fund.
And it's not twenty thousand that we wouldn't have paid, it's just we wouldn't have paid it all at once. It would have been spread out over a equal number of years. So it's, it's just something that you hit at one time, so it's harder.
Um, this next fund is solely a pass-through fund, so we budget in the general fund for the bond for this building. But we have its own fund to pay it, so I transfer from that fund into here, and then we pay over bills from this fund. And we have perpetual care. Um, we don't really have anything going on, so there's only a, an increase of that interest revenue coming in. Some of the things that we could do, or we have done in future years, is cleaning up the cemetery as far as trees, stumperable. And then we have the motor fuel, and again, this is a lot.
You're still in perpetual care?
I'm in.
Can't you get one smaller?
One smaller?
Yeah.
Uh, motor fuel is the allotments that we get from the state. So again, um, these are allotments that we have been already told that we would be getting in, so those are standard numbers that we are giving from the state. The rest are gonna be your expenses as far as, um, your street lighting, road salt, contr- um, contractors, engineering. Um, and then we do, Chad does have budgeted for asphalt overlay in here. And just stop me if you have questions.
Is that, um, motor fuel down because, I mean, revenue down from three ninety-five to three oh one, is that because?
Word call.
Our certain situation here?
Yeah, well, um, so the previous year, it had the grant allotments added to it. And so you'll notice that I created a line item for grant allotments. Um, they did, the state did, um, decide over a two-year period that they were going to give all of this grant money to, for motor fuel. Um, it's an allotment for a specific project only, so you can't use it for things like street lighting and road salt. So that's why I created a line item for that. But we were told, um, by them that motor fuel, the allotments are decreasing due to people not traveling as much.
That's what I meant.
Big time.
Yeah.
Sure.
Jamie, the asphalt overlays, is this, is there another, uh, account that has?
Capital improvements, no.
Yes, okay, does it, yeah, and how much, you know, offhand, that would be a possibility.
No.
Will be the money, okay, no big deal.
Yeah, and I know Chad has, um, some plans as far as what he wants to do with the allotment grant. Um, but I don't wanna speak for him. I, I know that he has said, though, that he has a specific plan for it. And we have the fuel depot. Um, one thing to note is we did increase, um, how much the city is now going to pay for fuel. We increased it fifteen cents. So meaning if we purchased it, um, for two dollars a gallon, then we are actually, we send out our trucks to be refilled. We're in, we're paying fifteen cents more to actually fund, um, the maintenance of the fuel depot. So we were getting pretty low on the account, and Eric did some averages and figured out that fifteen cents should at least keep us to not have to dip into that balance.
So we're paying ourselves?
Correct. Questions? For some motel, um, I do have the revenue being a little bit lower than what we typically, we typically are, um, budgeting around fifty thousand. And I did decrease that with people not traveling as much, um, and not knowing how much to decrease. Um, I did decrease it about five thousand. Otherwise, um, the expenses out of there are the chamber contribution, um, and some of the ads in the chamber or, or the, the newspaper for them. Economic development, this is just the, um, transfer in and out fund for the development agreements we have. Um, so for example, we have the handicap, save a lot agreements, this is just a pass-through fund for those. Revolving loan fund, um, we don't have anything that we know a true number for yet, so we don't have it in here. But as, um, in previous years, we take that to council for approval anyways. So if we had somebody who applied for, uh, um, revolving loan, we would come to you and get approval on, on how much funds we would get out.
So we don't, we don't budget for it, because you have to prove it anyway, versus things in theory that are budgeted for, don't have to come back to council?
I will let Eric.
Do you want the microphone? I'll just speak up, loud enough so everyone can hear me. Uh, for the revenue budget for the electric department, um, I started taking averages of what we normally bring in. Plus what, um, we do have an increase that we're gonna start seeing this month on the utility bills. Um, but with revenue being, our load being down, our monthly, we had a, a period of three months where we were above average. That was June, July, August. We did really well for those three months. Uh, September, it fell right back off. We're still about ten megawatts short from where we normally were, but that has a lot to do with temperature. So what I did with this budget is I took our rate increase into consideration and raised our, um, total revenues up, um, by about six thousand, six hundred thousand dollars. Um, is this the previous year?
Mm-hmm.
So this is where we were in, in the, um, twenty twenty. This is where we're projected to be right now with the rate increases. At council, I said it was gonna be slightly higher than this, but with the load being down, and we don't really know what's gonna happen with the schools, um, I brought that down. I wanted numbers that we could actually hit. Uh, some of the big changes you're gonna see, um, gain on sales, I don't, we don't have anything to sell this year. Uh, last year, we had a line truck, or a digger truck, our crane. Um, and you can see that we did sell those. Um, line capacity is down just a little bit. So this is, um, Eliza Generating Station. This revenue stream can go from five hundred thousand to seven hundred thousand, depending on how often the unit actually runs. Um, I kind of pulled that back, usually it's around six hundred thousand, I pulled that back, just in case we didn't make that. Uh, with coal fire anymore, um, it, it's kind of like a peaking unit. It comes on when the wind's not blowing, when the wind's blowing, it shuts off. So it's been kind of streaky lately. Um, this is where we're looking at our opening balance of five hundred and three. Um, bond payments. Here are due February first, we have, uh, six hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Um, due February first. So when you see that we are carrying this amount over, if you scroll to the bottom, you will see our cash on hand is just about those bond payments. And we should be over those.
But I want, if I can jump in, I want people to notice that revenue over expenses is just a hundred and four thousand. So with the rate increase, it's not like we're, we're killing it and having a huge surplus, because we're not.
Just, at least this gets us back into the positives, because it was negative.
Yeah, yes.
Uh, a lot of this has not changed. Uh, there is a few line items that have increased. Uh, cooling water is up just a little bit. We have to replace a controller. Um, your lubricated oil is up. Um, we buy bulk lube oil, and you have to buy it at a thousand gallons by time, so, it's around ten, yeah, they're ten dollars a gallon. So that's up, we're, uh, we don't have anything for, um, backup right now, so we'll be doing that. Um, the big change is this, gonna be this engineering and supervision. So this, um, every three years, we have to do staff testing for the EPA. Um, it's gonna be forty-four thousand dollars, so that's where this engineering and supervision will come in. Uh, purchase power, um, we're just about where we have been. This is with being, with us buying power about thirty-four dollars a net watt. Currently, it's around twenty-nine dollars a net watt, but that does fluctuate, um, up and down depending on the load, the weather. Um, for, there's a few line items with, um, transformers and devices is up just a little bit. We have to buy some spare transformers for some of our commercial customers, because we've started using those in certain locations, especially with this twelve-four-seventy conversion project that we're doing. So now we need to, um, put those back in our inventory.
Is that a, is that an estate?
Oh, yeah.
Cause right there, it's twenty-five thousand, because last year it was a hundred and forty-two?
I'm not quite sure why it's a hundred and forty-two.
I can look, I have to go on. I don't think it's a state that would want to book twelve-five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did you, last year have to buy something there? Maybe something got booked to the wrong line?
Yeah. Um, fiber optics, we do have a couple projects. Um, we have a reflow that'll be set, that we'll have to put the new fiber optics in. We have fiber splicing of the utility building for part of this, um, forty-one sixty, twelve-four conversion, um, to get it, to get it from overhead to underground. A lot of this kind of stays the same. Um, our capital projects for next year would be Circuit Two, forty-one sixty to twelve-four seventy. Um, that would be, um, kind of south of, um, First Street from the power plant over to Stewart Street and down to Chestnut, somewhere in there.
Is that even capital asset expense?
Yeah, this is.
A hundred and seventy-five?
What's that?
A hundred and seventy-five thousand?
This would be the two hundred thousand here.
Oh.
So that would be, um, eighty thousand for that one. Uh, we'll also be doing the, um, tie line replacement, phase one, where we're gonna do hopefully around ten, twelve utility poles. Um, that'll be a hundred and twenty thousand. Um, so that'd be phase one also. We're doing a unit eight engine upgrade, so this was supposed to be in twenty's budget. This is one of the items that we had pulled off and held off until this year, uh, the twenty-one budget. Um, that'd be a hundred and twenty thousand. But that project is, it, it does some automation inside the power plant. Um, that unit is twenty years old, so we're gonna change that to PLC, put new controllers in there, put breaker controls on it. So when the, uh, we lose our tie coming from Mid-American, the engine actually automatically starts up.
So Jamie, why do we have two things called capital asset expense?
Because one is for the plant, the other one's for the line crew.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
And that amount, one hundred and forty-two thousand, is line crew inventory. The auditor has us put that amount in, and then at the end of the year, so basically, if finished last year, um, three hundred and sixty-one thousand. And then when he had me doing a adjusting entry of five hundred thousand, it was a hundred and forty-two thousand was the difference, so it wasn't actually what they spent. But every time we have, um, inventory, it gets booked to this account.
I forgot, we did just talk about that. So we did the inventory a little bit differently this year. Uh, most of the time, it was just transformers that we inventoried. Um, line crews, they could, uh, initiate it to make sure that they know what they have, because we have a lot of parts in inventory that we're never counting for. Now the guys can see it, know what's there, and know what they need to order, which is a big thing. So that, that did, I remember the auditors last two weeks ago mentioned what account they wanted to do. We could have broken up into multiple different accounts, we just went to that one. And then we, our last capital project is generator testing. So every ten, fifteen years, what we need to do is test the generators. We disconnect them from, uh, the breakers, we test the wires, we test the generator itself, and we'll test the breaker. Just to make sure that everything's still good to go. Questions?
Water next? No, there's a couple more between you. Um, the next one is the electric meter deposit. And you'll, you'll notice there's a balance in here, but as we start refunding, um, this balance will go down significantly. We will still have, still have some deposits on hand from your businesses and your residents that are near or to the community or um haven't had good payment history. So it'll still have a balance, but it won't be as big.
So there's not really uh an expenditure, oh, where it says zero for expenditure, is that what the change? Revenue over expenditures? No. There's not an expenditure line item?
There is, um, interest. So if you have a deposit on hand, you have to pay them interest, it's whatever the bank rate is. And so we, we guesstimate what we think it's gonna be.
But where would we book the money we send back?
We would just book it to the fund. You won't see, you don't have to see.
There's not a line item?
Right.
Okay.
And then that'll just go up as a credit on there, the customer's bill. The next fund is refuse. It's per our contract as far as uh the fees increasing. Um, remember in the beginning, um, the revenues were higher than the expenses and as it goes through, revenues are gonna be lower and the expenses are gonna be higher based on the contract. So we should see more of a trend of it, you'll notice the fund has a decent balance in there, but as we get to the next two years, it's gonna go down because we're gonna get into the fund balance for that. And that's just the way the contract was written out for them.
We have two years left roughly?
I believe so, yeah. The next fund is water. Um, I can only speak for the revenue side of it, and that's based on the um increase, the two percent increase, um, and then the averages. So you'll notice um the amount went up a little slightly because of the two percent in these different revenue areas. And then his expenses as far as bonds, again, those are your normal bonds that come out in February. And I can't speak for him as far as his line items as why he increased or decreased them.
What's the end result of, yeah, so increased by about fifty-one thousand?
It'll increase by seven thousand.
Well, expenses will increase, but you're right, yeah, yeah.
Right, yeah. It's basically a wash.
Aren't those bonds coming off?
Until twenty twenty-five, I believe is the earliest. So they have, water has three bonds, two, I see there are two or three bonds. And they don't start falling off until closer to when the waste water for the plant will be on.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a little bit of time.
It's gonna be a wash too.
Yeah, we plan for that.
The next fund is um water meter deposits. Again, this is another one that we're gonna be refunding. So you'll notice the balance go down in that. Then we have sewer. Again, the revenues are based on the increase that was budgeted or was a big fund for the sewer side. And then he has his expenses. This one's only in yellow because it's new line item. It's just to tell me I need to go and create a line item. And then they will finish um with a positive three hundred thousand, which is good because they're gonna end the year pretty, pretty low, so it's gonna have them be a little bit healthier. Again, the next one is Article Thirty-Six Police, and we, the same thing that we always budget for is what we budgeted here. It brings in a whole lot that goes on in this account. Then we get to our TIPS. So we have the Save-A-Lot tip. Again, this is our tax revenue that we get in. And then we have our agreement that we have to pay, plus um we did add salaries. And the salaries for this tip agreement would be two percent of my salary and two percent of Joe's salary.
So that was, that was a way to help with the general fund and it's perfectly appropriate to book our salaries to TIP because he's been trying working on TIP.
The next fund is for Route Six tip. And um again, we have our Joe and my salaries in there. And then uh we did add infrastructure improvements. We added a hundred thousand to this one, and I'll let Joe talk about that.
So our TIPS are going to be expiring. And at the point that they expire, if there's any money left in the TIP, we have to distribute that to the taxing districts. So we need to start spending some of that. And uh I had a meeting with Keith and Doug, and we were talking about stormwater and some of the issues with stormwater. And two of the areas happen to be located in TIPS. So I budgeted a hundred thousand just for infrastructure improvements in Route Six and at Route Eighty-Two Buster. So I don't, I don't think that's the sixth yet, but um even after budgeting that, we still have a hundred and eighty-six thousand. And it brings in, this one brings in about fifty-six thousand each year. So we built up some money, but we can start doing some infrastructure improvements. Uh, downtown brings in, I think that's the next one, yeah, it brings in a hundred thousand a year. So uh we also budgeted there to do uh sidewalks because we've been talking about the condition of sidewalks downtown. So you see, I think it's miscellaneous expense. Last year was only budgeted at sixty-five thousand, and this year it's a hundred and sixty. So that gives us approximately a hundred thousand dollars to start working on the sidewalks. And we'll still have two hundred and forty-six thousand left in the TIP at the end of the year.
Do people know, I mean, is that an education thing for people to apply to use that or?
No, we do it.
Well, new businesses could come in and say, hey, I'd like to take advantage of that TIP district, right? And like we did for Save-A-Lot or the, so like if there's a new business coming into downtown, could they say, hey, I'm?
They could, they could, but um we'd still be safe because
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm just saying.
It's the increment. So if somebody bought a building and they put a million dollars into it and their taxes went up, the taxes have to go up. So usually the only time it really works is when there's a blighted piece of property that they demolished. They built something new and taxes went from almost nothing to something pretty significant. The increment is, goes into TIP. And then we work an agreement. It's kind of like buying the car. We might say, well, you have seven hundred thousand in TIP eligible expenses. We'll give you five hundred thousand over the next ten years, whichever comes first.
I was thinking that if, if we need to start using it or else we kind of lose it in a certain amount of time, then we need to encourage businesses to start asking for it or else we will end up.
But we can only rebate what they pay.
So like that corner shop that we were talking about last time, maybe? The one that's gonna do all the remodeling and rebuild the whole building?
Because it's gonna be on the inside. I mean, they're redoing the outside, but their property taxes probably aren't going to change substantially. But it's, it's almost, the, the, the times that it works is really when there's nothing and you build something. Even though the new building itself is not a TIP eligible expense, but all of the infrastructure, the engineering, the cost of the land, thirty percent of the interest on any loan, those are all TIP eligible.
So like if we built a railroad area, uh, new things around the railroad depot, that might be eligible for TIP? If that's a, if that's a.
Yes, except the city doesn't pay any taxes.
Well, it's not our, I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, if we have to use it, then we have to, we have to go and use it.
If we sold the lot to someone and it's in the TIP, yeah, that, that's a perfect scenario um for an appropriate use of TIP.
Oh, cool.
Beth, you're in about that drainage thing of the TIP money. I've actually been, I've been needing it for many years. So I'm took a little bit about that.
Yeah, yeah, true.
Well, we've got two hundred thousand. There'd be a study first, which uh, we're met with him. Could be somewhere between fifteen and thirty thousand for a study. And then we'd have to look at it, but it would definitely involve purchasing ground and putting in retention pods. So the two hundred's not gonna fix it, but it's a start.
I do think that. Didn't we do a study of the Route Six stuff not that long ago?
We just talked about it.
Oh, we just talked about it? Maybe it was, maybe it was the school came in and did a study on that. St. Ambrose, maybe they did a drainage district study and they are.
They did stormwater study.
That's probably what I'm thinking of.
Yeah, that's generally throughout, throughout the, I've seen it over time and talked about.
Well, we need, we need to have a sidewalk plan and we need to have a stormwater plan. Some strategic plan for that stuff.
That's great.
I guess, moving on.
Yeah, this one, um, we didn't talk about the salaries, um, again, are mine and Joe, but then there's also twenty percent of the parks labor, uh, lead labor position because they spend so much time watering and taking care of the downtown flowers. So they are booked, um, part of this TIP. And then we also increased um community development expenses for anybody that applies for the facade program. Joe said that there's a couple that interest, and so you'll notice that that is increased.
So on that, we would match, if they spend forty thousand, we would give twenty. That's the most we would give. So if we did the most, that would be three of those, but most people aren't spending that kind of money. And this one, Route Eighty-Two, so that's down closer to uh Great Revivalist, that area around the highway. And so that has a hundred thousand of construction booked.
You're not anticipating, is Lionstone done?
They are, correct.
They are?
Well, they're not our favorite, favorite fund capital.
Yeah, um, for capital, the local non-home rule, again, that is decreased uh by the ten percent. So um the revenues could potentially be a little bit higher there than a four hundred and fifteen thousand. Um, the two hundred thousand is pretty standard for the utility tax, my tortax. So um we won't see a decrease in that, so I kept that as is. Then um we have, it goes down to professional services. And this is for the codification, I believe.
Yeah, so that's uh to get our zoning, codify and review. So that, we'll finally have that on the website. And um the codification was part of the six month, and that is for the legal review, which would take about six to nine months for them to do. And they go through our entire book and compare it against all the statutes to make sure we have everything. They recommend you do that every three to five years. Um, when Lori was still here, she said there's no record of it ever being done, so.
I noticed that you have the four hundred sixty-nine thousand out for industrial park. Where's the end from selling it this year, this quarter?
It'll be in the six month.
I just didn't see it anywhere.
It'll, it'll come in.
Is it unbudgeted, maybe?
Correct, because we didn't know we were gonna sell it. So it'll come into capital once we get the funds.
Awesome. Thank you.
And we should receive it before the end of this year.
Yep.
And that, at that point, we'll have to decide. It, it was transferred from general fund to capital and then paid out of capital? No, am I wrong?
Yeah, that's the part.
How come we always do that? She wants the slacky.
Yeah, I do it like every time.
Okay, so that will never go back to general fund?
No, unless you guys decide that you want to transfer from capital to general fund.
Okay.
The, the thing that could potentially go back, and I believe we talked about it, was the transfer from general fund for the park. So we did do the four hundred and we can transfer that back if you guys want us to transfer that back.
Is there, well, is there an advantage to that? I guess the general fund's probably a little more open?
Um, I, my, my suggestion is yes, to transfer it back to there because you'll notice at the end of this budget year, the capital fund, we haven't used very many resources out of the capital fund. So its balance is gonna continue to grow where the admin fund, we're gonna close it at eight thousand dollars to the good, so. That's, I mean, that's just fine.
Okay.
Okay, so kind of just, we went through, we compared the capital improvement plan and met with each department head and compared that the stuff that they budgeted in the capital improvement plan is reflected in the budget or we'll be revising a few things because police moved a couple things off and one thing already happened. That was for twenty-one, but the server we had to get it in the six month. So anyway, I think if we scroll to the bottom.
Do you want to know what all the items are in the capital?
Sure.
Um, so the hundred and forty-one thousand is public works and I put down to that.
Is that ninety-six thousand? Please equipment your charger.
It's two vehicles.
It would have to be.
Did you guys hear that?
That was a little.
The hundred and forty-one is for two vehicles?
No, that's, he was asking for the ninety-six.
Oh.
I had to ask him.
Can't have a side conversation.
No, I'm sorry. You go ahead. No, go ahead.
Sorry, I can scroll in online because I have all the notes on there. But um there are two pieces of equipment that Chad needed for um public works. One of them was a utility truck and then the other one was a snow, yeah, a snow plow?
Snow blower, is it?
Um, yeah, snow blower and um like the utility truck.
Four thousand is for computers as a place?
Correct. Computers and a switch. So they, they needed two computers and then a switch. The ninety-six thousand is for two patrol vehicles. The sixty-two, three is for a tasers and cameras.
Oh, it's you.
And copying machine. So they need a new copying machine. Um, the cameras are on City Hall and the police department need to be replaced. And so that was around fifty thousand and the taser was thirty thousand, three hundred.
Eric, Eric's been working with a, a representative for the cameras and, because ideally it would have been nice to, you know, get his and ours on the same system, so he got a meeting next week.
Yeah, we've been looking at um multiple different um companies to work with for cameras here at City Hall. They have old analog cameras and it'd be nice to go to an IP camera where you get more coverage. Um, and ideally we'd like to have one system that's common is the enterprise funds use one system and City Hall uses another. So if we could kind of combine them, keep them separate but combine them into one server, then the ideal.
For, for us, our, our, they're getting to that end of the lifespan. They're original to the building and I mean, if something happens, we had an incident where a state police car had its tires slashed and the cameras were pretty much useless and trying to help anything with identifiers. So they're, they're getting, you know, I don't want the worst case scenario happening, but it'd be nice to be able to have a camera that actually, you know, would be useful, you know. So they're, they're getting, you know, I don't want the worst case scenario happening, but it'd be nice to be able to have a camera that actually, you know, would be useful, you know, hence the one charge is to be filed.
Didn't look like Bigfoot did it?
It did not.
No.
Definitely a.
So the capital improvement fund basically opened up one point two million and it's closing in almost one point five, one million four seventy-five.
So if I transfer the four hundred back over and it closes at the one million mark, there's no, I just need direction from you guys if you want me to do that. And then we have the health insurance fund and the ins and outs are gonna be identical and that's just the retiree insurance. Um, so the only other thing that comes out of there is um the twenty-five thousand for things like health issue, miscellaneous charges. And um not this year, but at some point, um, we should think about once our other funds get healthier to reestablishing this fund in case we have another emergency. Because we're gonna close out around two hundred thousand where we started um two years ago, we had around seven hundred thousand.
Because we've paid the health insurance premiums instead of, out of the departments, we've paid three times out of here. So that's a pretty good hit.
That is all of the funds.
So this is at the ten percent and I would say based on our sales tax information today, ten percent, I think, is a reasonable amount. If we get a second wave of COVID and if the stores have to close, be closed closed at Christmas. It, it could be different, um, but I'm pretty comfortable, I think Charlie's pretty comfortable and Jamie with this budget, with these numbers.
For me, the biggest thing was when you looked at the difference of going, say, from zero all the way to like a fifteen or a twenty. We're within reasonable striking grounds of where we could make moves either way in the event something happened. And me and Joe talked this afternoon, I think the whole COVID situation is just realized or made, brought a new awareness to the fact that, you know, even if this is five years down the road from COVID, we need to be mindful of the fact that no budget's set in stone. And things can change in our world and, you know, the snap of the fingers nowadays, so we need to be in a position to be able to be responsive to that. To me, I know we had some discussion between fifteen and ten and I, I'm just, I think ten seems reasonably comfortable. I, I think, I don't think we're necessarily hurting ourselves from being able to provide services that our community would expect and to plan and work towards those, but I think we're also being reasonably cautious at the same time and, and. Doing a little more spending from what we did during the six month period, but yet not getting carried away either. But I'm definitely open for discussion.
I think that is just fine. You know, six months ago or whatever it was, a few months ago, we were talking about this, the same thing, we just have to be flexible.
Uh-huh.
We passed it tonight, I went, we passed it and the next day we went to, or next week or whatever.
Yeah.
So I think that worked out pretty good.
I think it's to be cautious, but it's important to try to get back to functioning as a, as a complete unit of government. That's what our citizens expect, that's what our employees expect and, and I think we found a way to do that.
We're, uh, I'm waiting to hear back from uh Ken Minzel, the city attorney who's shown up lately the most, about some dates. Um, because if we are going to look at doing the truth in taxation for the tax levy, there's some specific things we have to do as far as advertising. So many dates in advance and we also have to, he's got to get back to me on which one we pass first. And I think it's the tax levy before the budget. I think it has to be in that order, which is logical that you know what your tax levy is before you pass your budget. But he's gonna get back to me tomorrow, so the whole point of that is um you may not see the final budget on the agenda at the first of November. Because if I have to do the tax levy first, then it'll be there.
Isn't that letting like the first week of the first penny, I mean?
That's the deadline, if I remember correctly, wasn't that the deadline last night?
Sometime, yeah.
Yeah, because we, when we did the uh police pension portion last night.
What we would probably do for the tax levy, if we've gotta pass it first, I would have a committee of the whole, I'd have a public hearing committee of the whole with the tax levy on there in November. And a special council meeting immediately following to do in, in one night. But um we can't, you all can't vote tonight, but you can give me a little direction if you think that's the direction that you're wanting to go. With increasing the police protection, that'll make a whole lot of difference with some of the paperwork.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
I agree.
I think so.
Okay. Then I'll have, I'll have that.
Yeah. That was a part of having this meeting to try to get ahead of it because, you know, every week, it's a week that would have been a week they would have lost if we waited and the committee of the whole was large to begin with. I know everybody's been on council for some period of time and sat, sat through that first budget, getting that goes on for hours and it's just, it's hard to.
And keep in mind the tax levy though, we won't reap any of those monies until two thousand and twenty-two. So uh we talked about different revenue streams, so the, the tax levies, one, non-home rule sales tax, you can increase that by a quarter of a percent. But that does have to go on the referendum. If we did it, it would bring in about a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. Um, and if you think most of the people that are paying that are travelers with uh restaurants and gasoline. Um, that might be a political thing, but that would be one, if, if there's any indication to go that direction, I need to bring that to the cow next week. So you can talk on it, I can, I'll just put it on the cow, I guess, and y'all can, we should have the whole group at that point. But if you guys kind of think that there's no way you're going to do that, then I'm not gonna bother because I don't wanna upset the citizens' needle slip.
Hundred and eighty thousand dollars is not a break or something, I don't know.
No.
If, if that's the sales tax, if we're talking about a hundred and eighty thousand, that's about a drop in bucket. I mean, that's not really the revenue source we want for all the staff we're gonna get.
Agreed, except for, I think history has shown us that too many years repeatedly of, of dismissing things as only being a small knob is, is starting to rear its ugly head.
I, I, I understand that, but I'm not sure the sales tax is the one I'm looking at.
So, I mean, yeah. Yeah. No, I, I agree, there's, there's lots of means out there and I was not arguing, I'm just saying I, the one thing.
There's other things that would, I mean, a whole lot more than eighty, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
I agree, yeah. So I just, we just need to make sure that this is, this looks good for the moment.
Mm-hmm.
But we still have to continue to think along those lines on, on future streams and I know Joe is, is steaming down the road economic developmental wise. And hopefully we can yield some results with that in the long term because that's the ultimate key to this community is, is expansion. Um, but in the event those things don't happen, we need to be mindful of everything that comes along and that goes for every business. You know, we can't dismiss that, well, we don't want that business because it's really not gonna yield that much because if you take ten businesses that don't yield that much over ten years, all of a sudden that's, that's an amount of money. You know, we're looking at a budget right now, we're at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars one way or the other, it can be a difference maker on breaking even sometimes.
You know, something that, that I'm really happy with this meeting, I feel so much better about this than I did a few months ago.
Mm-hmm.
At least we have some kind of like internal knowledge about what we have to make tough decisions in the future and that's essential. But what it'd be possible to get, and you know, you mentioned some things that I, when you think about, uh, if you can make a list of some of the stuff that you guys have done, it's kind of spectacular. As far as reductions, let it be detailed, but like for example, uh, the, the park people and the public works and the reduction of the, the numbers there and adding part time in there. Just a comment, you know, one or two sentences about what you did there. Something, the other very thing that you guys have done to help me to look at it and say, wow, this is really what we've done. And we haven't made decisions about maybe possibly make a cut or put a change, we got.
Yeah, I, I can't.
Something in my mind that.
I can't compliment Joe and the entire staff enough, I know it sounds redundant, but, you know, there's so much work that goes into preparing this on a yearly basis and, and then the daily work that goes into, to just the operation of the city government across all branches. But yet, every single one of them in their positions looking at efficiency and where we can, you know, from, from some of the surplus properties we've got, one of the surplus vehicles, equipment. And to be able to multitask in that capacity, it just shows a dedication of this community that's incredible. And, and it's always been there, but I mean, COVID has thrust it to the forefront to where people are doing so much more.
Well, that's good information to have too, if we're going, you know, to increase the tax levy or something.
Here's the stuff we're already taking.
I, I think residents, you know, there's nothing more frustrating when it seems like you're always, you know, looking to take more money, if you will. But, but you're not willing to do anything, you know, from a, a cost containment.
Right.
And, and here we really, you know, that, for our city, at least from my experience and stuff, you know, these are significant cuts that have been made and good leadership and stuff on it. But, you know, that's something that needs to be shared too, that it's not just this, we're also doing this and together, you know, it's a whole package that we're trying to put together.
And that, that was something that came out of, of a leadership meeting and then a mid managers meeting. So Brandon chaired one of our leadership meetings and I came in and I said, I, I didn't realize that they had done this, this exercise called start, stop, continue. And I talked to Brandon, I said, I wanna talk to everybody and get at least three ideas from each person how we could that cost. And so he said, oh, we need to do start, stop, continue. And by the time we were finished with it, we had a hundred thousand dollar reduction and that was significant and then we did that with mid managers and um. I'm very, very proud of the people I work with.
Yeah.
Very proud.
There's such ownership in, in not only their job and their role of keeping the town a seal going in that capacity, but there's ownership in, in getting this city through what we weren't sure was gonna happen over the last few months. And, and to me, that's where it was really important to, to look at trying to see where we were, be realistic where we were and, and rather than just reap a reward from that, to, to, to try to have some co-ownership in, in how we came out of that, so.
You know, we, I just look back on the attitude that especially, especially like uh downtown, you guys took the block off the streets a little bit there and we still got some brewery house left back there. There's a parking lot there, I mean, that stuff was also, well, the message, you kept talking about the message, that'd be a, that'd be a big message about what we either, what we're doing. I appreciate that, I think that's, that's really, really was helpful.
I think it'd go a long way with the union and non-union employees, that we're being incredibly transparent.
Yeah.
We've, I've shared with leadership every time Jamie shares with me our sales tax numbers and with you guys and.
I think you guys find that beneficial, don't you?
Oh, yeah, very.
Yeah, and then that way, you know, we can, after we get through Christmas, after we get through, hopefully not the second wave, we'll be able to say, hey. Okay, so we thought it could be as bad as this, this is what it was and so now we can do this. We don't have to, but we can and, and we should.
Mm-hmm.
We have, I think, we did a good job of telling this about it, but it's kind of trickling in, I mean, my memory didn't work sort of big, so.
Yeah.
So if I had a piece of paper, just kind of summarize it, and someone, someone could get it out to Brandon a lot. I mean, it's hard to break a lot of cuts and stuff, but didn't really know a lot, it really.
Yeah, and that's where, any of our engagements with the public, just like you said, Keith, and just helping us into that, you know, I mean, because to me, it's been an impressive, impressive effort. And so much has transpired in the last six months, if you think about where we started and we went into that six month budget to where we are now, I mean, by no means out of the woods, but, I mean, talk about a roller coaster, right? I think we went through it once.
I know, it's while we're getting compliments out. I do have to compliment Joe and I told him, you know, that when she got her stuff was gone for, she was gone a long, I can't believe it, but there's her car out in the parking lot, but anyway. Even when you were gone, it didn't seem like we just kept the heater out here, you know, from what I could tell.
Right there.
Yeah.
That's why.
It was just shocking to me that there had been this guy.
But we still need you, Joe.
Yeah, I told Brandon I'm not giving you more compliments because I'll be talking myself out of the job. And I like my job.
No, but I mean, it's there, you want to be able to do that.
I'm gonna throw one out too, I was just sitting there thinking about this and, you know, I'm gonna throw one at you, Sean, too. And compliment you, you know, you realize you got sworn in at the mayor's in the middle of frigging, excuse me. You're on the beginning of the hand jamming and I'm just gonna grab.
I'd give her a compliment, Sean.
And, and you know, the other thing that was great under the situation with what we went through is you had worked with Casey before. You were a police officer, when they started putting all these COVID things in and all these rules and regulations, I mean, we had the perfect setup here. You know what I mean, with, with your police experience and then being able to work with Casey and. So we probably get a whole lot better than other communities, better than.
We did, we did, yeah, sure, yeah.
A lot of work and he, he always picks up the phone when I call him.
He thinks you're a customer.
He was, no, no, he doesn't, he comes out of all, so he's not quite sure what he's gonna get, you know.
You know, the chief will tell you, because the law person writes and you would be proactive or reactive and, and I think we caught some flack in the beginning with trying to launch a, what would be a local road recovery effort, I guess, for lack of a better word. And once again, it's about trying to be reactive for your community, your citizens, but just rather than wait for somebody else to tell us what we're gonna do or how we're gonna do it, let's think about what we're gonna do and how we're gonna do it and be ready with the ground running.
I sure hope we don't have to go through anything too bad this fall, you know, I think everybody's.
Yeah.
Realistic around here, I feel, you know what I'm saying? I think our community deserves.
I think we're taking a very grounded approach and I think most of our citizens have been doing the right thing in whatever capacity, yeah. I guess the only thing I would add, you know, is if, if you guys digest this over the next week, if, if, if something comes up, a question or a concern or a discrepancy or whatever, either let me know or get with Joe. So when we do get to next week's meeting or we have those questions answered, that information's prepared or whatever, so we can continue to move this down the tracks.
Not asking in a, in a negative way and I don't know how to, I, Craig always has so many good questions, do we have a plan? I'm afraid that would.
We have a plan.
Well, no, I, I, I mean, he, he likes the detail and that's great, it's just, I know he probably couldn't be here tonight, which is reality.
Right.
How do we, how do we get him up to speed till the next meeting, we're not all going through it all again in detail?
Yeah, really.
Well, he has the agenda with the copy.
I mean positive about it, I mean.
No, he has the agenda with the copy.
Yeah.
As you know, I can only meet with two alternate at a time, but if Martin and Craig wanted to meet with Jamie and I, we could do this.
Yeah, we talk regularly, so.
And then.
Okay, again.
And then.
Sometimes I can encourage those questions the right way and stuff.
Because he has good questions, I mean, it's, I don't wanna, I don't wanna shortchange that.
Yep.
Yeah, we could, we can do that.
I did ask Casey about the charger in, in Craig's absence.
Thank you. My other question I have is if you guys know of things you think need to change before the next meeting, so you can see the numbers or if you're good with what is presented as of right now. Because I can change if needed.
Good with this.
On the other week, as you said, what are you guys thinking to skip over?
Oh, the four hundred thousand.
Correct, yeah, and that would be in the budget, it would just be me doing a transfer.
Okay, whatever's easiest for you.
And I would just do that, if you want me to do it, I would do it this budget here, so we're flexing the next.
I think we ought to put it back.
I think we ought to put it back.
I think we should too. What do you think, Keith?
Agree.
Uh, moving on, public comment, number ten, city where it's allowed to operate in public, speaking of events, three minutes of light during public comment, there can be no debate or action by the, of the city council at this time. Pastor Steve?
Well, I, I hate to admit that I'm breaking a four month streak. I was determined not to make a public comment and I made it through four meetings. But I just have one or two very short things that I'd like to share just from my perspective. And the first one um, has to do with venue and that's um, here's my concern. Obviously, when we talk about some small businesses, we all know what we're talking about. And, you know, the marijuana businesses, the gaming is very unpopular amongst pastors, amongst the church community. And that fervor is not going to subside very easily and I hope it doesn't. But here's my concern, within our current setting, uh, and in this venue, we're being responsible, we're social distancing. When we discussed those issues in the past, the council was actually very responsive to the citizenry. You set up a projector out in the foyer, there was additional seating that was there, the community had an opportunity to express itself. And no matter what way decisions go, I think the worst thing that can happen is when the community feels like it in some sense was stifled and didn't have that opportunity. So I'd like to challenge the committee to consider, or the council, I should say, to consider a change of venue when we would get to topics that would be of that level of concern to the community. And I know there's a judgment call there, but I think we know from past discussions that those are very concerning issues. And I don't see how we could possibly do that. I was able to squeeze into the corner today, but normally I've been sitting out there or I've been sitting home. But if you're home, you, you can send in a comment, you can put it on YouTube, but you can't discuss, you can't persuade. And I think that that really does silence the uh, the community to a degree that could backfire on us. So I don't know if the answer would be the school where you could go and spread out in an auditorium. I realize that there are some technical logistics, but we deal with those things in church world all the time. And I'm sure that Garrett could come up with a solution that would maintain the live stream, but give the public an opportunity. The second comment I wanted to make concerns the police. First of all, I don't think that there has ever been a time where this community has appreciated our police force more than right now. So I would encourage you to go forward with that levy, but Joe, the way that you had presented it, you gave two numbers. You first gave a percentage. And the scary thing about the percentage is when you go from point oh zero to point something else, it's like, it's going up ten times? Then you said, and in a house of three hundred thousand, that'll come to about twenty-seven dollars a year. All of a sudden, I'm sitting there as a citizen going, oh, wow, I could do twenty-seven dollars for our police. The way that you message that is gonna be incredibly important. And that latter statement was the perfect messaging. And then to borrow something from uh, from our political system, they talk about at times making a clean resolution. And you can see right now that there's, there's a big problem with the stimulus package because there's a desire to put a whole bunch of other things in it. I would encourage you to the best of your ability to make a clean resolution concerning the police department. Even if things are voted in at separate times, if you package these other businesses that actually make policing more difficult, not easier, I think it complicates and muddies it. I would hate for the police resolution or tax levy to go down because it was married to pot and it was married to gaming, which are very, very contentious issues in our community. So I would really encourage you to keep that as a clean resolution and consider that one alone. So, those are my comments. Thanks.
Okay, any other public comment? Or should we adjourn?
Should we adjourn?
Or should I log them?
Second.
Second back row, all papers say aye?
Aye.
Yeah, those are both same sign?
Pastor Steve, I don't think it counts as you're doing anything. You haven't been to meeting in four times, so not.
I've, I've been home.